You're a pro. That's what makes the difference. When you're on TV, you're a professional. See, before, you know, people were like, "Oh, exactly."
Now you're gonna give you everything.
Yeah, I got this little kid that he's on Channel 18. You know, they take pictures of kids in school and stuff with their teachers. They have a picture of him and I was babysitting him. He's the best little kid in my church. But anyway, I had a babysitter once while I went to a play. He goes, "Hey, look, that's me on TV." And I said, "You're a pro now." I said, "You're a pro."
Forgot my computer. Didn't have time to go home and get it.
Yeah.
This is a discussion I have to organize.
Do you want a work session in your previous place like here?
Mariah Carey Day.
I haven't seen her.
Second day of practice.
It was all part of this re-haul.
And she's like, "Why?"
Did she do that?
Well, it's 4:30. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. I do want to welcome our television audience. And just a brief explanation. We don't have a person in the camera booth, so this picture is what you're going to get. It's an experimental basis to start with, and we'll see where we go from here. So it was called this meeting to order. We're just going to go straight down the agenda for work session. The first two items are routine that we can deal with next week at our council meeting with the proclamation and the Pride of Community awards. I really like those Pride of Community awards, by the way. The first item that we'll need to look at is a public hearing, consideration of ordinance rezoning property at 2814 Mount Pleasant Street. And Eric has some explanation for us for that.
Yeah, this is a property that lies directly west of a current C-2 general commercial zone, but it's currently zoned M2 heavy industrial as a former auto lube place, oil changes, and they're wanting to allow some vehicle sales there, which requires a commercial zoning. So it makes sense to zone it to a C-2 general commercial, which still allows auto repair and auto oil changes and other fixes like that, but also allows the sales. So it fits with their needs and fits with our zoning in that area as well, being C-2.
This is just west of the old Hardee's Restaurant?
Correct.
Yes, okay. Questions, council? Any more explanation you need to do?
I really don't have any questions, but I guess more of a comment about this. I guess that being a highly traffic area, you know, and having a lot of vehicles out there for sale, as well as being an automotive place too, is sometimes the cleanliness of the site, you know, vehicles being, you know, tore up and still parked and everything else. And that's being right off Roosevelt too, and looking on some first impressions too, which I'll get to at the very end of the agenda today.
Anything else, Eric?
No.
Counsel? Seems routine, doesn't it? Last week, or no, two weeks ago at a regular council meeting, we discussed this next item, amending the unsafe building and code. Basically amounted to math labs, right, Eric?
Yeah, yeah. Just the testing results, getting that more in line with the actual testing companies of what they produce and specifying that all rooms need to be checked as well, so.
That's just pretty routine.
Yeah.
Hang on.
We adopted this section of code probably seven years ago, and this is the first change. So we've kind of been going through it and seeing what works and wanted to make a few changes.
Do you mind asking Kathleen if we can, if she can be prepared to waive the third or second reading on this one? What we do is waive the second, go right to the third. Okay, while you're there, Eric, the next one also we talked about two weeks ago, the urban revitalization plan. Refresh our memory on this one.
This essentially eliminates the cap for what can apply to tax abatement. Currently, you're only allowed up to $75,000 in value to be abated from your taxes, and this would allow unlimited abatement, whether you build a $150,000 house or a $250,000 house.
Have any of you heard any discussion about this? Got any input from?
I just heard all positives. So I would waive the second.
Okay. You might be prepared for that one too, Eric. Okay, thanks, Eric. Now we have some really positive things to talk about here in the next couple ones. A discussion about changing the collective bargain agreement with Communication Workers of America, AFL-CIO. Jim or Bev, what are you going to talk about this one?
Well, we have met with the union representation from three separate bargaining units over the last couple of months to talk about different ways to be able to reduce the cost or to raise revenues or just do business differently. And we've had a lot of suggestions that have come out. During the course of the discussions and just talking about the condition of the city's finances, the next two items relate to two units who have voluntarily brought forward a proposal to consider an amendment to their existing contracts. I might ask Bev to kind of make sure that I stay on track with this and maybe fill in if there's anything that I miss on this. But essentially, we're getting ready, we're in the, just started the fourth year of a five-year contract. As we get looking at the next year, they weren't looking at this year, but next year in two, for fiscal year 2014, they were looking at reducing their, the increase in the payroll amount from a 4% increase to a 2% and extending that 2% for an additional two years, extending the term of the contract for additional two years, maintaining all other contract terms as is. This is a, for us, is it with these two groups, about $110,000 savings in 2014. And the compounding of that into the out years, it's kind of difficult to put a number on that because you don't know what we would have bargained otherwise. But it, just as an example, as you talk about the non-union personnel, when we, when the decision was made to reduce that to a 2% increase, that was a $60,000 savings in the first year. The second year, at a two, again at a 2% as opposed to 4% next year, would see a $200,000 savings when it's compounded. So it can have a significant number attached to it for the out years on that. One of the big points that I think that was, that we talked about from a staff perspective, department head perspective with this, knowing that it would be something that's an issue or concern for council. One of the things this is doing is extending the current benefits along with the new salaries over the next, or an additional two years. Health insurance has been a topic that's been discussed quite a bit. One of the components of our health insurance that I see is very significant is that we have a 5% average increase built into, cap built into this contract. So from the baseline in 2009, is that, from the 2009 contract year moving forward, the average increase on health insurance is capped at 5% for the city. That has meant that annually, as insurance renewals have come in, there's been some discussions held at times, because there are times where the increase would have been over that cap.
Every year.
And each year, they have made some changes or revisions to the contract to try to maintain. So even though we haven't seen the split where the person, where staff are picking up significantly bigger chunks of dollars, they are managing our increases by reducing the benefits they're receiving. And I think there has been some changes to term. If the participant was wanting to stay on, like when we made the change to the dental plans, if they were wanting to stay on their existing plans, their premiums did go up. The majority chose to go to an altered plan this year. Is that being fairly right on this?
Yes, our dental plan did include orthodontics, but we could save .9% if we did not include the orthodontics in the plan that we cover. So now the employee has to pay out of pocket if they want the orthodontic coverage.
So what I, just looking at it from the perspective, I know that you're going to have some comments that will come at you in regards to, this does not change the split of health insurance costs between the city and the employees, but I think we have some good provisions in there now that help to manage our costs on a long-term basis. It's in a way that keeps it to where we know what our planned increases are going to be. We don't have to be under the threat of, as you were doing some comparisons, looking at what some other communities have seen over the last few years, one of the towns, one of our comparables was a 23% increase this year?
Clinton has a 27% increase this year.
Wow. And, you know, you don't see that every year, but you can see that if you don't have, the provision we have in here won't allow that to occur. There will, that'll be a significant, if we see a 27% increase, the employees are either going to be picking up the cost or coming up with a major change in how the plan is structured. So this is something that is really to our benefit, the way that's written in terms of health insurance costs. Okay, questions on?
Yes, I appreciate them coming forward and offering to do this when they know that the city needs, you know, some financial help. So I really appreciate that.
And I also appreciate the other suggestions that you have given to the tax costs, and we'll be pursuing some of those too. So thank you very much. It's a big help.
It's been very, very helpful and wanted to work, to make things work. Because, you know, what I've seen, I haven't been here a long time, but what I've seen from the union groups is a real desire to see us all succeed.
Good.
I don't know if you had some thoughts that you wanted to?
Okay. I applaud you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you too, Jim and Bev, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So that takes care of six and seven, both the communication workers, and they asked me. So thank you, folks.
You're both the same then.
Yeah, the contracts, the changes, the changes that we're talking about mirror each other. They've done the same thing.
And which groups are these? Number two and number three, what groups are these?
Well, CWA are the police officers, the dispatchers, parking enforcement, and animal control. And of course, AFSMI has a wide range of employees, our streets, wastewater, parks, our finance office, transit, engineering.
Library.
Library.
What about that guy right there?
Where's Fire? Fire is not in the one.
Fire is, has not agreed to this at this time.
They are still under, having some discussions. I don't know, this, again, this was something that's voluntary from the.
Okay, you're okay.
They were a part of the discussion, and they are still considering it.
Okay, good.
Anything else, counsel?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
And this will be on the agenda. I don't know if the question was asked, do we need them to come to next Monday's meeting?
So whether you would like to see them here? I, again, from our perspective, or from my perspective, if there are people who have questions from the audience and you wanted to be able to just kind of give a summary that there can be some potential value there.
All right, good. Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back to Eric on the next one with the final plot of the first division of Westland subdivision. Okay, thank you.
This is the plat for the new school on Mason Road. This follows pretty much identical to the preliminary plat was previously approved a couple of years ago. Includes one large lot, Lot 7 for the middle school and athletic field, and then six lots on the east side of Willow Avenue for single-family homes that they could sell that I guess we feel are, could be very valuable as well. With the lack of lots to build upon in the city, that those would be great lots to be built upon as well. It does plot out Willow Avenue extending to the south into Sequoia Drive that goes onto Mason Road, so looking to get this completed prior to school starting, so they've been working out their details for quite a while now.
Now, Sequoia going to be a city street or a school street?
Yep, Sequoia will be a city street. It eventually could extend to the east and tie into Mason Meadows or that sub, that development to the north.
Not having been here, Sequoia has been, has been built?
Yeah, all streets and their structure are built.
Willow is built too.
Yep, yep.
I still think we're going to have problems with that entrance into the school.
I agree with that. I was just thinking of that. You know, on Sequoia and Mason, just in the morning and the afternoon, I just think it's going to get really congested because we only have a turn lane going, was it, east? Yeah. And I know there's a lot of, and I had, somebody asked me the question this morning, you know, about congestion of vehicles and is there a plan in the future of, you know, because that's a highly trafficked road, so.
What does the auto look like in the, before and after school?
Um, I get to work at 5:30 and I get home at 6:00, so I can't tell you. But it's, according to my wife, it's pretty tight.
That's pretty tight.
Yeah.
Well.
That's going to be a problem. That is going to be a problem.
Derek, Derek, traffic will be 7:30 to 8:00, is that roughly?
And then 3:00 to 4:00.
Three or more. I don't know how that corresponds to the rest of people there.
Well, sort of my answer to hers, time will tell.
Yeah, we'll have to see what it looks like.
We'll have to see. And the, and I don't know if you know it, but the buses, when they come in, will they go through on Willow Avenue all the way to West Avenue?
No.
No, their plan is to stay on Mason.
Stay on Mason, okay, that's, okay.
That was one of the deals when we talked about this, was the buses would not be on that part of Willow.
Well, because there's a sign now that she says on Dill that says bus traffic.
Oh.
Really?
There's a sign now?
Well, somebody just put up a sign, so I wonder if it, and I have not seen it, so I don't know how accurate that is.
Last time I was there, I didn't see it. That was a couple of months, or last month. While you're there, Eric, I noted, note here the vacated Terrace Drive, and that's the part that we're down here on the consent agenda, talking about transferring that to the school district.
Yeah, that had been previously, previously vacated by the city, just transferring over.
Which is now probably part of the football field, right?
Yeah, yep.
No, they can't have it now.
And then number five within the consent agenda as well, there's some release and termination of easements located within that football field area.
Oh, yeah, okay. Good, I'm glad you mentioned that.
Really getting everything cleaned up with.
Always one down a football field.
Actually, it's probably more the track than the football field. Okay. All right, so that will be an interesting year following, to see what the traffic patterns are like.
The benefit over Sunnyside is there are two entrances and exits. And as the area to the east develops, there will be additional entrances and exits. Dill will continue to the east, and there'll be some other connections throughout that area, but it just won't happen until more residential development occurs.
At one point, there was some discussion about Aspen going through to Mason, is that still a possibility?
It's not planned at this time unless the church brings forward a residential development in that area.
I had a couple of comments on the school, thank you. I've been working hand in hand with the school, if you want to discuss that now or later, at least when the school first opens on Mason Road, to deal with some of this traffic. Kind of got a plan in place, at least for the first week, to try to control the traffic flow and make it easier.
Okay.
We're going to have a three-way stop on Mason Road, a temporary sign with two squad cars, three officers, and we're going to block any left-hand turns when you leave the school. We're going to try to train people to leave the school and turn right. Now granted, they're going to have to go to Lawrence to West Avenue, and maybe a little inconvenience, but if they want to turn left, that's going to back up clear to the school.
Yeah, because that's one thing I was thinking.
And the second concern is eastbound traffic turning left to get into the school. My concern is, is that turn lane is very short, and we can't allow that traffic to back up to either Lawrence, let alone 61. So for the first week, we're going to be out there like we did when Sunnyside first opened up, to kind of hopefully train people in how this can work. And we'll just have to reevaluate it after that first week. But that, those two left turns are concerning to us as well, because Mason Road is extremely busy.
Well, that's going to help that first week out big time.
Maybe, because parents eventually are going to have a place where they stop to pick up their children, and that'll become routine of nature, just like Dill on Sunnyside. So if we can enhance that process, I know it's going to be a little confusing first because they built a left-hand turn lane to exit Stone to go east on Mason. Well, we're going to put two squad cars with our directional aerials there and basically just not let them make that turn, force them to turn right and try to get into that habit. And hopefully, that westbound traffic will flow smooth enough that we can get the eastbound traffic in and out of the school.
Good.
So we've been in contact with them at least for the first week, and we'll just have to monitor it after that, because it is a concern.
There's my answer.
You mentioned people stopping to pick up their kids. We're not going to allow them to park on Mason, to let their kids come and.
Right, no. Right, I'm thinking more like Willow Street, you know, back in there, it's kind of like, if you think back on Sunnyside, its original location, you know, some people would park on Golf Lane out of the travel course, and then their kids are getting the habit of where they would go and go. So we're thinking over time, I know some of the residents over there, it's going to be a concern, but over time, if we can get a routine established, it might not be too bad.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Eric. All right, so that takes care of items five and seven off the consent agenda also, folks. And moving to the consent agenda, first item is a resolution approving the sidewalk extension for Blackhawk School on the Safe Route to Schools. Steve, are you here to talk about that?
I can.
This is another Safe Route to School grant program. And the sidewalk that we're going to install goes from Kestner Street north to Navajo, and then we have a stretch there directly across from Blackhawk Elementary School at the South Ridge subdivision that just went in. On the memo, we have the two bids received, JDM Contracting at $58,347, and WL Miller at $99,732. So we recommend award to the low bid, should be well within the grant amount, should be no city expense to this project.
Amen.
JD&amp;M, they did the Sunnyside, or, yeah. So, I don't know if I can, because I'm going to talk about later on Burlington cleanup stuff, but on the Sunnyside one, there's two sidewalks. Was it part of their contract to tear up the old sidewalk?
On the west end near Yoder and the old greenhouse site, it was not part of the contract. Those are actually private sidewalks. They sit to the north of the Sunnyside right-of-way, so we were not able to touch those.
Because there is some landowners that thought that was part of it, and it's.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we could not, here on this project, there are two properties on the west side of 14th Street that have sidewalk already installed, and we're going to join those at each end. So we don't have that situation on this one, fortunately.
When will this be done?
We've got a late start date of August 20, I believe, which unfortunately is when school starts. But we had to do some easements on this project to get the sidewalk in, and I think they've got 20, 25 working days. It'll go quickly, and then we'll be out of there. We tried to bump that late start date up so we could get the work done and get seeding done this fall, because so many times the projects linger on into November, December, and then you're stuck with a lot of bare ground without the seeding. So that was the reason to at least try to keep that moving.
Well, the difference of, our grant money was, what, 88? And JD&amp;M came out at about 58 instead of doing seeding. Could we do some sod in some certain areas?
We could look into it. They have not let us extend the projects. We've asked on a couple, on Sunnyside and some others. That's not as much a change of scope.
Thirty thousand dollars, I was like.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it could be, it could be a potential there.
When you do that, somebody has to be out there watering it.
Well.
It might be better that it's later than earlier.
Right, it's later.
How much of the new subdivision, how much of the sidewalk are we doing there?
This project includes the frontage along 14th Street.
All the way down the whole length of?
Yep, the curb drops have been put in with the street. We're going to connect those to the existing sidewalk, north and south.
Okay.
We won't do any back into the subdivision. That's part of the homeowner's responsibility.
I just wondered if they had already put theirs in across the front of their division, subdivision.
No, I don't think the front two lots are developed yet, so, are built on yet.
The question's been asked here in regards to the Sunnyside project, is it the intersection with Irish Ridge Road?
Right.
Could you give an update on what's going on there?
We're working on a change order to install a short segmental wall there. The right-of-way was very tight with the corner there to make the ADA ramps work, and state just got back to us today, they wanted some clarifications on that change order, but we anticipated to go through, be part of the grant, but just trying to clean that up so we can grade the ground there without going halfway up into the yards.
Does the homeowner know this?
Yeah, we've been in touch with the homeowner. They were involved with selecting block.
Yeah, they selected some block.
Well, and, they, I'll make another call to them, because they may be wondering like you what the schedule is.
Yeah.
That's a good, good.
Yeah, because they've, they flagged me down the other day and just wanted to know timeframe, and I said, I have a perfect guy to talk to.
Yeah, well, they've got my contact. We've communicated.
Well, that's what they said. It's been a while, and they were just wondering, so.
Steve, that's one of the things I appreciate about your office, that you're keeping good contact with folks and letting them know what's going on, so that's good. Okay. Anything else here?
Nope.
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Do you want to see a map put up at the council meeting next week, or just go with it? Well, we're on consent if it stays, so.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Yep, okay. Next item of the consent, the next two items are actually for the golf course, machinery items.
Yeah, the first one, Progressive Proflex is a rough mower. Had requested in the budget $18,500 for it. Cost was $16,760. We use this pretty much on a daily basis, and it's a pull-behind mower. Getting to the point where repairs are needing more and more frequently, and something planned to replace instead of having it break and not having it budgeted, so it's something they're looking to replace at this time.
So what's the old one, scrap metal or what?
No, it's something that I guess they expected around $1,500 for trade-in. It's just something that, through its age and use, that it's breaking down and something we need replaced.
What's, what's the difference?
What's that?
What's the difference?
What's the difference?
From the new, with the trade, with the trade-in?
Expect the trade-in around $1,500, and the new was $16,760.
Okay, you lost, I thought you said $15,000, I'll say, wow, man.
No, no, $1,500.
Man, we need to find some used ones and just keep trading.
Sorry about that. $1,500.
Okay, the next one is...
Next one is for greens mowers. We're currently under a four-year lease for our two greens mowers, which is up in August, looking to a four, new four-year lease with $14,311 annual payments, that is out of our operating budget, has been budgeted in that, within the golf course budget, so greens mowers are probably one of the most important pieces of equipment for the golf course, and something we've done on a lease basis to maintain the quality of those, and has helped us out with repairs and maintaining quality equipment there.
That's my question, normally you consider, when I consider leases, they're not usually a good thing, because they, you don't end up with anything, but in this case, I can understand. Because they do get used.
They get used every, every day, and we have two of them, if one breaks down, and you can't operate a golf course without more greens, so...
But you can, it's just not during the golf.
Might not have any golf crews, still operate it, but...
Well, we're on the subject of the golf course, that golf course is in about as good a shape as any golf course in the area. Those guys out there do a great job. Yep, okay. Any questions, council, from Eric? Okay, thank you, Eric. Alright, you're gonna stay there, Eric, for this one? This is a contract with Regional Planning for the CDBG Downtown Revitalization Grant, and basically they're going to administer it, is that what they're going to do?
Yeah, they're a little more familiar with the IDD regulations and requirements and paperwork, and have staff dedicated to that. So they would be paid out of that grant money, so...
Alright. This is that $500,000 for facade?
Yeah, for the downtown sides.
Facade, yeah, okay. Do we have a timeline for when that might possibly be?
The RFQs are due in a couple weeks, middle of August, I believe.
Yeah, I was thinking that one did have a time. I don't know what it is, we look for things more to happen in the springtime, probably, because of the paperwork and everything.
Yeah, it's a process, but I think the RFQs are due in August.
Do we have a timeline, when we have to have spent or done the project in order to qualify, do we know that?
I think the money's, once we've been allocated, the money's there, and I...
I think there is a timeline, but I'm not...
I thought we were supposed to have...
I think it's like 18 months or two years, but it, but we do have to have drawings and...
I thought we were supposed to do what you call first, before we would get the money.
That'll be kind of simultaneously, I think it's in the same time period, to do the senior center. And I don't know where you're at on that.
And have we talked to property owners, are they on board?
We had to sign.
Yeah, everyone had to sign up on it.
You had to get on first, right?
Yes.
And all the property owners had to commit to a match to it.
Yeah, was there some kind of easement too involved?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, council? And this is Eric's show tonight, folks. ET. This is the last one we have for a REAP grant.
REAP grant, this, we apply, have been applying annually for the Flint River Trail for REAP grant, it's $150,000. No local match required, and it can be used as a local match, so it's a very good grant for our program. Last year, we were not funded, because we had three outstanding grants, which have, were tied up with that Phase Two and Four that had been constructed. We do have the ramp going from Big Muddies up to Bluff Road, that's part of a REAP fund that should be constructed this year as well, so should look a little better with the grant application.
It'll go from Big Muddies to where?
Up to Bluff Road, climbing up the bluff there.
And where does that go, but it, doesn't it go on down to the marina and then go up there?
Well, it goes along the Riverside Park within that area.
So it's not Big Muddies, it's more closer to the marina, is that correct?
No, it's just beyond Big Muddies, just to the north of Big Muddies.
Okay, because I've been trying to figure that out.
Up that retaining wall, if you're in Big Muddies parking lot, you can see where the retaining wall.
And it will go up there, and so it won't be by that, by the marina at all, that area?
No.
And then it'll go up on the highway?
Up to Bluff Road, and then we're working with Public Works and Regional Planning to get a grade separated trail on the highway, but that's most costly and probably the, one of the most time consuming ones.
It's gonna be sick, man.
No, that's what, but it's tough on bicycling, too, because there's not a lot of room like that.
Well, we have an application for that grant from, from the bridge north. To redo that Bluff Road.
Yeah, and this is geared towards that Bluff Road area, $150,000 will help with future grants as well, to show that we have a match if we get this grant.
Great.
Speaking of that grant, that, we've gotten word back from the, that the region is recommending to the state board for approval, and I don't know if that comes up in August for the board meetings?
I believe so, yeah, that's from Zach James of the Region Planners. It appears that that's a favorable project, and that they will recommend it for a board.
And typically, the board, I think, pretty much rubber stamps the recommendations that come in unless there's something that really stands out.
The time they had that meeting out at, out at the Comfort Suites, someone from the city was on a teleconference. Is that going to be required, I assume?
It's not required, if you go to those board meetings, you'll, some, some communities go to the board meetings, and a lot of them do not, because they, that rotates around the state, the state will hold those.
But, I mean, they were on, by phone, they were talking to... Okay, wonderful.
That is wonderful.
That was also good news about the Stars Cave thing last week, too. Yeah. Alright, that takes care of our regular and consent agenda for next week. Let's go up to discussion items, we have, can we talk about the hydro thing first? I see Brian's here, maybe he wants to have some input into that. Jim, what do you have to say about the hydro thing?
Well, actually, I think I will turn it over to Brian. I have not, I wasn't involved with this from the beginning, there, you do have my summary in there, in your packet for what my thoughts were on it, but back in 2009, we worked with Klinger to do the original permit, which is coming up to its expiration, and we're looking at what it'll take to renew, or the cost on it's, to renew is $5,000, the original process was $20,000 that we entered into with it.
That's right, that's correct.
If you kind of want to walk the council through the process that's gone on over the last three years, and how we got to where we're at now.
Yeah, Brian Bross with Klinger Associates, local engineering firm here. I think Jim's summary there, the discussion items, hits all the main points. The initial discussion was, is that there was an opportunity that arose with Locken Dam 18, and with the combination of low-head turbine technology, there was an opportunity to submit for a three-year permit. And the permit allows you to pursue feasibility studies, and in hopes of becoming a project ours, and then obtaining a license from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. In the process, we were able to develop a feasibility study, found that it is technically feasible, but not financially feasible. There were several issues with regard to 1603 Treasury Grant renewal, and several other things that are fairly complicated. At that time, we had provided four strategies. Strategy A was to proceed with development activities right away. Strategy B was to limit work, to wait and see if economic influencers on the project change. Strategy C was to recruit equity partner. Strategy D was to stop all work and eliminate the project from consideration. I think we, I think we kind of had a, strategy A was not going to happen, the city was not willing to take on any more financial commitment there. Whether or not the economic influencers have changed, I think, remains to be seen. I mean, I think if you look long-term, you're gonna see more renewables, as coal becomes out of favor and so forth. And equity partner, the point of that strategy was to determine, have someone that could partner with, that could provide the financial backing. And, and the complications related to that have been somewhat borne out through Quincy, Illinois's work with Locken Dam 24 and 25, and with regard to the municipal preference. And the long and the short of the municipal preferences, as a municipality, all other things being equal, if you get your permit application in, you would have preference as a municipality to pursue that license above and ahead of anyone else. Not sure what would happen if another municipality got involved, obviously. Or to stop all work and eliminate the project from consideration, and I think there's been a lot of energetic discussions with the Renewable Energy Committee, that they wanted to see some kind of activity to go on. So we're here today, basically, the end of August, that three-year, initial three-year permit is up, in order to keep the door open, so to speak, for an equity partner, or for the economic influencers to change on the project, another three years. We're, we're proposed to submit a revised or an updated version of the old application, with some new information we have on economic viability of the very low-head turbine technology. We'd probably adjust some of the locations of those on a drawing, and, and provide that. So basically, what we're saying is we would amend our existing agreement with a new task for the $5,000, and get that in on, after, basically, the last day of August, after business hours at FERC. And that would keep the door open, and allow you to continue to explore those possibilities.
So assuming we leave, we do this and keep the door open, you keep referring to equity partners. From what I've read, the Canadian company that wants to do this, they're putting the money into this, are they not? Reminds reading that?
They're, well, they, yeah, I think that's exactly right, if something were to develop in that regard. I think there has to be an agreement that would, one, preserve the municipal preference, which means the city has to be in charge and control. But it also, if, if you're gonna be in charge and control, you don't want the liability associated with it, there has to be some kind of a structure and a mechanism, so that you can preserve your right to move forward, get some benefit out of that. But again, you'd have someone, an equity partner or someone operating that system. You know, the, the name of the Canadian firm has come up, there's no agreement with them, they're, they're out there, but there are others out there, and others have shown interest in the past, so there's no, there's no agreement.
I just, I just want to throw in there, Quincy did do a lot of work for us, setting it up, and the thing is, for $5,000, keeping that window open for three more years, so much can change within that three-year window, that I think, that I think that, that $5,000 bucks, I really don't think it's that, that much money to keep that window open for the opportunities that could be available to us down the road, because we just don't know what, what could change, or who would step up that would want to be a part of that. But I, I sure would love to, I sure would love to have that right here in Burlington.
Our plan would be to, after this is done, FERC grants us the license, is to then see if we can't come to some sort of an agreement with someone that will allow for a structure for how that will get developed, how the energy will be marketed and used, and what kind of financial structure will be in place that protects us. Because the biggest concern that I've had is, is that you're building a, a, a structure that's gonna have a cost of energy, there was mentioned 65, I'll be very impressed if that $65 megawatt actually comes, comes about. Right now, we have a marketplace, that if, if you're trying to sell on the open market, you're selling at 25 to 30 dollars a megawatt hour. So there needs to be some sort of a financial arrangement to make that work, or we're the ones, I don't want anyone holding the capital cost and afford that.
And I guess I have a real problem understanding how we're gonna make money here, and if we pay this $5,000 and extend it, then we are also leaving ourselves open to paying for other studies in the next three years.
This is, one of the things that, about the energy industry, though, is, is if you have the right partner...
They take care of it.
That, that becomes valuable to the right partner. There are, there is a dam that's gone over Ella, just recently, and there are two others that are under consideration further north on the Mississippi here. They're looking at the same cost components that we do, but they have an energy group that is selling energy into Minnesota, South Dakota, North Dakota, Iowa, Missouri, I don't know if they have any in Illinois or not, but they have a, a base of users who, some of them are under mandatory requirement to have a certain percentage of their energy come from renewables. Iowa is not under that at this point, but they have to do this. And so for them, when you're under a mandate to do something, the cost structure becomes different. So if you have the right partner involved, it becomes a very viable thing. And the other thing that gets mentioned, briefly was mentioned here with the orders that have come out, where EPA was recently authorized, basically through court decision, that says that you can regulate carbon dioxide as a, as a waste, and, I can't exactly remember the right words.
It's a greenhouse gas.
Greenhouse gas is something that's, that they should be regulating. Once that occurred, effectively, it did away with any new coal plants. The next target that would be out there, I mean, the next highest usage or producer of carbon dioxide, O2, is natural gas-fired plants. And I don't see those being under attack right now, but I do see that over the next five to 10 years being the new focus that EPA has. And when you take, if you take natural gas-fired plants out of the, out of the process, now you have energy that is priced $50 to $100 a megawatt, and this is very cost competitive, and it becomes very viable. So from that perspective, there's a lot of value to this, and I don't see it necessarily so much in terms of where we are now, given that we don't have a partner, but there is a lot of potential for it in the next few years.
It's kind of like owning a warden or something, isn't it?
This whole process demands that the city be a party to this, right?
There's the difference between us doing it and a private entity going out, the municipal preference, we go into the line. If somebody else goes to apply, they get thrown into a hat, and whoever gets pulled out gets pulled out. If we go in, we're pulled out of the hat before any private entity. The municipals just have a leg up in this process. And it's very valuable when you're looking at a three-year renewal process, where if you don't get your, get stuff done in three years, you go through this renewal, and now all of a sudden, if you put a lot of time and energy into it, as a private entity, you can be displaced very quickly in that renewal process.
I think this, I think that keeps the door open to, to explore the equity partner side of things. It, it could still die, there could be nothing, it may never pan out.
We don't know that.
There are risks associated with that. So this isn't guaranteeing a promising solution, but as, as Jim pointed out, and I've been really pleased with his knowledge and experience of the power markets, and I think he has a good understanding of that, but it really, as you do look out, that five to 10 years out, there's, and I think you already see the writing on the wall, the coal-fired plants, right or wrong, have a target on their backs, so...
So for the $5,000, we're not incurring any other additional costs?
No, that, that would, that would get the permit, application in, and then, assuming everything goes well, they return within so many days, and you, you get it, and then you're in the three-year timeframe, basically. And, and then, and then you get to explore the frameworks that would work with a public-private partnership through the municipal preference, that would protect you, make it feasible, and go forward. The time to do all of that really can't happen in 30 days, so...
Okay. Are you making your recommendation to the council?
Well, my recommendation is, is that we, it's not on the agenda... Well, my recommendation is, is that we, it's not on the agenda right now, but to add the resolution amending the agreement with Kleiner on the hydroelectric permit for a cost of $5,000. They'll work on, yet this week, work on an amendment to that contract. And we'd have to get the resolution to go with it.
Sweet.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Local option sales tax, we wanted to have this on the agenda, just to remind everybody that a week from Tuesday is Election Day. And obviously, we're in a position where if we were to lose $4 million out of our budget, we'd be in worse shape than we are now, so.
Now, can people still vote absentee until what date?
I don't know what that works. I don't know what the final date is.
Calling on voters, calling on voters, all constituents, make sure we, make sure you show up to vote, we definitely need that to pass.
So that date is August?
August 7.
We, as the city, cannot advertise and so forth.
We can't spend any money, but we can express our opinion, yeah. And I would encourage people to vote, whether you're for it or against it, if you don't vote.
Yes.
That's the main thing. But I saw one yard sign in support of it, I don't know where that came from. Anyway, it's crucial.
A yard sign?
Mm-hmm.
Probably had it for 20 years, or 10 years.
Well, it says August 7th on it, so, obviously, it's anywhere. All right, Councilman Reed has an item he'd like to talk about.
Do we not want to talk about solid waste, are we taking that off?
No, it'll come up. I'll let you go first.
I don't have a packet for everybody, but I think you guys could share. So over the past couple of weeks, actually, longer than that, I've had a lot of people come up to me and talk about things within Burlington that they would like to be changed a little bit and cleaned up a little bit. And there's some pictures in this little packet that show some areas and some concerns that I have, as well as ex-councilman Murray went on a little driving tour Saturday, or Sunday?
Who's the photographer?
Sometimes neither one of us, we just let the camera go. And actually, there are some photos that people submitted in to me. But these are photos that are scattered all the way throughout town. You know, we've changed the ordinances regarding grass height and weeds, but if you start looking, unfortunately, they're out there more and more and more. There's numerous of sidewalks that, there's a lot of overgrowth, there's a lot of graffiti on the side of buildings that are city-owned buildings, as well as a lot of structures downtown. There's a couple of pictures of alleyways down there that, you know, I guess when I look at things, I look at, we want to put a good, you know, first impression on everybody. Like still Jerry Sherwood's thing, first impressions last. And if you're driving in and you come downtown and you start to look down the alleyways, what do you see? You see a lot of overgrown weeds, dumpsters, dumpsters that are wide open. The alleyway behind the Old Tama building, there is a 12-foot drop down that has a ladder in the alley, going straight down to the ground. It's in one of those pictures. That is covered over by two sheets of plywood. So that's a safety hazard when it comes to our youth, as well as anybody else. That door for the Tama building has been left open. You know, just looking at numerous things. These buildings are becoming nuisances to us, as well as others, but what it does, it says, you know, how much do we care about the community we live in? And the trash that is scattered down through people's yards. So, in looking at a lot of this, is I'm trying to figure out what other communities are doing. Cedar Rapids is doing what they call cleanup Cedar Rapids. It's actually, is being pushed greatly by their city manager, but I sort of want to take it under my wings and say, you know what, on such and such a day, we're going to give out free garbage bags, and we're going to try to fill up as many dumpsters as we can. And that way, people are going out there and they're cleaning up the trash in their neighborhoods, on their streets. Because what are the impressions that we're, are we trying to give the residents of Burlington? Because right now, it's not too clean, in my opinion.
I still want to know what happened to community service. I'm checking the paper, and kids are still getting in trouble all the time. I remember that we had them painting and pulling weeds and everything. We had Burlington looking pretty beautiful one time. What about community service? You know, they can work it off, they can feel a sense of pride, they can also take care of their responsibilities. I'm all for community service, taking care of weeds, painting, picking up. We've got kids getting in trouble, that can, that can help them out. As a matter of fact, I would love to be a part of that, be a supervisor, watch them work.
One of the things that Fort Madison does is they take their inmates, and how they do this, I don't know. But they get a busload of inmates, and they're the ones that pick up the parks. So, how can we maybe potentially work with, you know, individuals in the halfway house through a police department and do some of that work? You know, community service, like Shane was saying, goes a long ways. But it's the images that we're trying to push onto everybody else. And, you know, it's, I had a lady that said this to me really well, it says, Chris, if we didn't have three more years of work left before we retired, we would leave this town. And this is an influential lady within Burlington, because it is getting dirtier and dirtier. And, you know, when people say that, and they're like, what do you do? And she goes, I don't even know my neighbors anymore, I try to get to know them, but, you know, there's rental houses out there that destroy properties. And so what are we doing as a council? And what can we do more of to prevent some of these problems that are occurring?
Some of them are societal problems that we can't do as a council. You know, we can't make people have pride, you know, either you want to have it or not. But, again, I still think that there's a part of the, of the youth, you know, of people that have gotten in trouble that we can start taking advantage of. Again, I'm asking, I'm begging for somebody to tell me, what happened to community service? Who shut that down? Why can't we not?
I think the schools shut that down.
The schools?
Yeah. Well, for, I think that, they do silver court hours.
Silver court, yeah.
But that's about all they do. You know, it, you know, it's, I grew up in Fairfield, we had to do 100 hours of community service before you even graduated. And that's everybody.
I remember when kids got in trouble, if you were a youth and you got in trouble, I did, so, sorry. But when you, but when you got in trouble, that, they would have, I don't even know if you'd get a fine or what the deal was, but you would have to work that off. Like, you know, if you, if you destroyed something, you'd have 20 hours that you'd have to work off.
But, you know, I agree with that, too, or using halfway, but still, I feel like there should be something against the owner of the property.
Right, and I agree, but we, you know, the thing is, we have the ordinances, we have the codes, but, so, why aren't, why do we have some types of ordinance and codes that they don't get enforced?
The other thing is...
That's my big...
That's what I have people ask me all the time.
Why do we have them if they don't get enforced? And, you know, and then, if we're not enforcing them, if we're just giving them a $50 fine, it doesn't have enough teeth. And that means we're understaffed, or if we need to divide the city up into quadrants, and say you, as, you know, within the nuisance department, has this quadrant, this, that's making sure work is getting done. You know, I understand our finances are tough, but you know what, we still got to continue to move forward as a city.
Yeah.
Because if we sit back and wait for our finances to collect and get back even, we're losing, we're losing out.
It'd be perhaps a project you could get your church youth groups involved in, too, in their neighborhoods.
But then I also think we, as a council, all need to get around that, too. And we need to be out there front and center, because it comes from leaders.
And this has also come up with the Imagine campaign, because I am on that little subcommittee for attractiveness and cleanliness and...
Me, too.
That's right, we were sitting there together.
You look very clean and attractive, Bob.
I look pretty good.
And so we're discussing that at that level, too. But I agree, as a government of a city, I do think that we...
We have to be front and center.
We need to be enforcing certain things to, to, because, well, this, this building is, you know, has changed ownership, or has no ownership right now. And so that's, you know...
Which building are you referring to?
So, but the thing, you know, so one of the things I went, did, or I talked to Tom Green quite a while ago about, Tom spearheaded a group of individuals that cleaned up some of the exits and entry points off 34.
Off Roosevelt, yeah.
And on Roosevelt. And the thing is, he's, he's like, last time he did that, he only had five people show up. And so, service groups do a lot, but, he's like, in his comment was, you know, it was us service groups, we didn't see anybody, any leaders within the city.
Yeah, I think that's...
El Pal.
I think that's true. You know, I think...
Well, that was a communication deal, that, too, because I had no idea they were out there doing that.
I think DPI tries to get people together for downtown, but still, the alleys, yeah, I'm, you know, I was concerned when the criteria came to town, how bad these parking lots, how dirty they were, and, because we have a lot of, you know, different people coming in, and I agree, you know, I'm trying to work on something that I don't want to mention here that would...
Well, you know, I think what really sort of sparked this really with me is, I was getting off 34, turning onto Roosevelt, and I'm sitting there watching people walk across or on Roosevelt, and I cut it, I say it's, they're hitting the trail system, going to Kmart. And so a couple of those pictures are up there. Who maintains that? Because those weeds are over five-foot tall. They're taller than me. So who maintains that? Is it Kmart? Is it the state? And if we don't know, we need to find out. Because that's what people see when they get off 34 and then turn it onto Roosevelt. And it's the impressions that we're trying to put on people. An individual that owns Brown Shoe Fit, every day goes out and sweeps the front of his store, really, so somebody else could just throw trash. Because when I was out there talking to him, the guy got out of his vehicle through a, you know, soda can, and it's like, really? Pick, you know, have enough pride. But there, you know, like Shane says, there are probably people that just don't have the pride.
Well, I think, though, you know, I pick up trash at South Hill Park, and other people do, too, but I think if we try to maintain it clean, then people realize they're not supposed to dump it. If we don't try to maintain it clean, then it's like, well, they do it, we can do it, you know?
We've got to find a way to get people vested, and they're not going to care. You know, I've never noticed even cigarette butts on the curbs until I joined the council. Then all of a sudden, man, I can see a butt from a mile away. Well, because, you know, I'm vested now, you know? And I think, I just think, we need to think about a creative way to get, get the youth and get people more vested in the community where they do actually care.
And I totally agree with that, but yet, it's the people who own the property. I mean, I agree with them coming in and cleaning up, but you're going to go in there and clean up somebody else's property all the time? I mean, there needs to be something that says, we don't allow this.
So I guess, you know, I guess, on a case like that, then what do we need to do? Do we need to have continuous further discussions on, you know, beefing up our, you know?
Well, I remember we had talks about that with the, was it Cedar Rapids?
Right, and that's what, yeah. And they're, so what they do is they take them to small claims court, and they go after the maximum amount they can. And I think that's something we really need to do, and we need to push forward. But yet, they even beefed it up another bit, is cleanup Cedar Rapids. They're doing it citywide, and they're really attacking their problems.
Doug, do you know, do you know about what happened to the, like Shane, Shane was mentioning about the community service with the...
No, I don't, but I'll see them on Saturday mornings, leaving the juvenile court facility, like a group of six or seven, and where they're going and what they're doing with supervision, I don't know. It's not near as widespread as it was a long time. But I know they still do community service things, but I don't know what projects they work on. Just because I see them leaving the building.
I know that they shred paper and they paint rooms that, buildings that we don't really use. Because my mom works for the community service, like I said, on Saturdays. And on Saturdays, they say they go up to Big Hollow and chop wood. I'm like, do you want to ask? But if they do that around Burlington, I think it'd be a lot better.
We probably just haven't asked for that, I mean, I think...
We need to ask. We need to ask.
Put the request in. Okay.
So, but I will be following up and throwing you more and more things as we come along.
All right. Okay, thank you for...
I don't think this is going to go away anytime soon.
No, that's fine. Okay. The last item on our discussion list is a report from, I suppose Jim and Stephanie working on this with the solid waste. As part of our ongoing effort to get our budget in order, the solid waste department needs some attention, so, we'll turn it over to you guys.
For solid waste, what I wanted to try to do was get to a budget that in five years would get us from where we are, a little over $200,000 in the hole, to the spot where we had just over $200,000 on the positive side, $230,000. Recognizing that we can't do that overnight, trying to do that over a few-year period. And it's not just that we have a deficit of a little over $200,000 that sit, in the past few cycles here, we've done primarily with the vehicle replacements, we've borrowed the money. We bonded for that, instead of having the sanitation rate cover the cost of the service, including the cost of the replacement of vehicles. Over a five-year basis, what I wanted to do is get a budget that would allow us to have the rates get us from that negative to the positive, have each year be a net, at least net, net neutral from one year to the next. To do that, this first year would require, as of, at the end of the first quarter here, at September 30th, October 1, to have an increase from the 12-10 a month, monthly service, to $13 a month. And it would need, also mean eliminating a purchase of a vehicle. We have budgeted for one piece of equipment to be purchased in this cycle for $165,000 in that range. And what I would recommend is pushing that out till fiscal year 2014, which would be next, next summer. It wouldn't mean having to push out that purchase a tremendous amount. I think that you need a lead, that they need a lead time of, I don't know, six, seven, eight months anyway, to make the purchase occur anyway, so.
Does that, does that 13, does that stay the same over the five-year period, too?
No, if you look at the rate structure, what I look at, it's near the top on these sheets, the approved budget for this year, for fiscal year 2013, near the top, the third row, fourth row down, has the 12-10 a month. What I just show is a revised budget for fiscal year 2013, has that rate go to 13 a month. For 2014, another 7% increase, going to 1391 a month. Then 2015, 16, 17, and 18 are all 3% increases.
So, what's, okay, just one question before you, Jim. Okay, after we get this balance, after we get this budget balanced, what's the game plan? Are we going to leave it right where it's at? Is that...
Well, you know, for right now, yes. Now, the major cost components that, that drive what goes on with solid waste, the primary thing is the tipping fee. We're spending close to $700,000 there, that's about 35% of our budget. And you'll see that it's built in, it's a shaded line item near the bottom, two-thirds of the way down the front page. And it's got the, what's budgeted for increases over the next six years. The other piece, it's, the other, other primary driver is personnel costs, and this reflects a 2% increase over the next three contracts, which would be what's been proposed for the revised contract, and then 3% in the out years. There may be some thought, I know that it's been, the question has been raised, could we possibly outsource this?
That was going to be my question.
And, and I think that that's worthy of discussion, but before getting into worrying about outsourcing sanitation, sanitation can take care of itself in terms of rates. The $13 a month, although it is an increase in 90 cents from where we're at now, is not out of line with what you'll see in other communities.
But we've raised it every year for the past couple of years, and so each and every year, we're raising rates. You know, that's my, my thing, and we haven't, we keep our spinning our wheels, for say...
Even though we outsource it, they're still going to be paying tipping fees, and we have no control... And we have no control about keeping it down if we outsource it. I've thought about that too.
One of the things that you'll, that's happened over the last few years in terms of the rate increases, it's all been designed to try to keep up with the tipping fee increase. It has not tried to take into account any increases in other costs. And, and this, this rate increase is larger and tries to take into account.
I guess I, I've asked, you know, previous city manager this. We are one of the only few counties out there that keep on raising tipping fees when everybody else is decreasing theirs.
Woodbury County increase was increasing theirs too, but yeah.
Henry County decreased, Jefferson County decreased.
Ours is a significant amount higher than the counties around us.
I'm just curious, how come so many other communities are going to the private sector and getting that out of their hands? I mean, obviously, there's gotta be, you know, a tremendous benefit to doing that.
But, but as, if it went to the private sector, would they go cheap, would they charge cheaper than $13 a month?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of people out there that wanna do it.
Well, you get $13 a month, but you also have, you know, you can only put one container out on your curb.
Yeah.
You know, that's, goes to some of those problems that we may be seeing, and then you had to go buy a $1.15 tag. And I could tell you.
Don't get me started, don't get me started.
I could tell you on a, for a family that has two kids, we put our container out there plus two bags. And so it's additional $3 every month just to pick up two more bags.
Yeah, and they won't take your plastic too, if your green, if your green tub gets broken up, they won't take your plastic if it's in anything else.
I guess I wonder what an independent hauler would charge per month.
Do we know until we try?
An independent hauler is not gonna do some of the extra things that we do. We do the, the annual cleanup, we were doing twice a year. That becomes a premium item to have a private hauler do that. A private hauler has to build in their profit margin. I think they can make, possibly have a cheaper operating cost to offset that. And it's potentially that this, it, it can be a cheaper service. I think that we have, from my perspective, even if there's a, a thought of outsourcing or privatizing sanitation, it does not help the, the general fund. And the general fund is where I have the most concerns right now. And I think there are some different services that we'll be bringing up over the next couple of months for looking at potentially outsourcing things in those areas. And I, you can only do so much at a time. It gets me concerned if we take too much, do too many changes at one time. And the ones that I know need to be done are the ones that, first, are the ones that have an impact on the general fund.
I'm glad to see the increase isn't huge, you know, the 90 cents isn't gonna kill anybody, so.
Well, and, I mean, I was for looking at outsourcing this. I kind of talked to private haulers, and I don't know that they want the city, that it's not a very profitable particular venture. And because it would, if, you know, there is a lot of expense to that, and the tipping fees are high, so. It makes, it would make me question whether it'd be any savings to the people in the end. But we would have no control over what the charge.
Now, one thing that, like Mason City, what they're in the process of doing right now, and again, this is, I don't think that, I, I don't wanna go this route right now.
Yeah, tiny wise, this is not the time.
Yeah, but what Mason City has done recently is gone through requests for proposals from haulers to look at privatizing theirs, and they've allowed their own.
To put their own bid in.
To put their own bid in. And that has some value to it as well. And I haven't seen, I really haven't followed it to see how that's, that process has gone. That was a month, maybe two months ago.
And knowing that, I would like to see how that goes and look at that, because, you know, it sort of keeps everybody on a level playing field then.
Yeah.
But we would have control over the cost because it'd be a contract basis.
If it was a contract, but I guess I'm saying, what if you don't get very many bids? What if they, what if it's not, you don't get very many bids?
You have the right to reject all bids too. In fact, Mason, Mason City has the right to reject the bids that they get and continue to price them, that's the way they are.
What you're telling us, outsourcing is not something to consider at this time.
I, I think there's value in talking about it, but I would say that there are, there are other areas that, that are gonna come up, and.
Yeah, because we've got some immediate needs here, we can't be putting off a lot of this.
One of the things that we've talked about, we met with Travis from Piper Street again this last week, and talked about some different, different scenarios for what we need to do. He'll be coming to work sessions August 27th, and then September 10th, two back-to-back, to go over what we've talked, what we had talked about in terms of looking at our financial policies, or, or what our debt projections look like, trying to get some budget projections in place for several years, and put us in line to think about capital improvement planning, given a, a look at what our, with the backdrop of having our debt, debt schedules. As we met with him last week, we talked about how we get, still, we still have a lot of funds that we have to pay off. Mark Plex, $700,000 in the hole, the golf course, $630,000 in the hole. We have a recreation account, $117,000 in the hole, road use taxes, a little over $500,000 in the hole. We have some internal service funds, well, the parking is $260,000 in the hole. Vehicle maintenance, I think, is the 160. Property maintenance is 60.
320,000.
That's the big one. Property maintenance is 320, and then 160 for vehicle maintenance. All those need to get right sized, and a plan of action needs to be done. And kind of what we walked through with Travis was about a million dollars worth of changes that need to be made. And he asked, well, so how are we doing it? Well, we talked, the first thing that we've done, the council made a decision to revisit salaries for non, the non-union personnel, which has an impact of about 60,000 this year. And if we had, had done what we would have traditionally done, about a $200,000 impact on next fiscal year 2014's budget. We talked about these two union contracts, which we are gonna have on next week's agenda. That'll have about a $110,000 impact or savings on fiscal year 2014's budget. We talked with Travis about some changes that have, or some positions that we've held open up to now. Within the fire department, we've had two, two positions that have come open, and we have not refilled them, which means that two of our three shifts are in, are operating at a 14-person crew or at a 13-person crew. Holding those two open is a $160,000 savings, and my recommendation is, is that we allow, through attrition, that, that other shift to get down to 13 as well. So, there's another $80,000 savings. Within the police department, back when Dan was still here and talking about retiring, well, even before he talked about retiring, well, no, I said, after he was talking about retiring, before he announced. He had had, the police department had a position or two that came open, and I told them they couldn't fill them. And during some discussions that, that probably went back to the department, one of the recommendations that they had had was to, as opposed to not refilling a police, police officer, to hopefully through this process, depending on how the structure goes with the hiring of a new police chief, there might be the opportunity to, to reduce one command staff. That was their recommendation, instead of having an officer come off the street. And you also had another position you were talking about.
Yeah, records a position, then we didn't replace the evidence specialist, so that's, that's a great position.
So, we've got some savings that we're looking at there. You know, we talked with Travis about, with Public Works, depending on what happens there, we may end up with a, I mean, right now, we have two engineers, and I think that's one more than what we need. But we have to go through the hiring process to see, do we have the spot where Steve is the one who does move up? If he is, do we not, do we keep his position open? And I'd recommend that we did, if that's the route that goes. If someone else gets hired, I don't know what, where that decision goes, but there's a potential for a $110,000 savings there. Your next work session, you're gonna have a consideration of, do, do we look at the possibility of outsourcing our transit system? That's gonna be the, the initial proposal on, a discussion of that will come up in the next work session. And I assume that at some point over the next few months, we're gonna have a discussion again about the, the fire department, is 13 the right number per shift? If you look at the comparisons with other departments that operate ambulance service, some of them are at 12, some are at 13, but that seems to, those, you can see a, a structure either way. And I assume that there's gonna be at least some willingness to consider, do, do we look at having ambulance outsourced or not?
Yeah.
Which has a huge change in what our force personnel is. Those are all general fund things, and I think are all of a higher priority to look at than the sanitation is right now. Sanitation is operating well, the rate structure is not tremendously out, out of whack compared to what I've seen other places. It may bear looking at. I, I do think that it, it can bear looking at, but there are so many areas that need to, that are part of the general fund issue that I think come first.
The best news.
Amen.
The best news, the best news about, about this process, Jim, that I've heard you say is about buying garbage trucks and paying for them instead of, that, that always caused me heartburn when, when we came, when it came across that we were bonding for a garbage truck, and I thought, that's, that's just silly. So I'm, I'm glad to see that we're headed in that direction, but I'd also, and I keep, I've said this a number of times, there, I'd like our solid waste commission to look into different ways of disposing of trash, rather than just bury that stuff out there. And I know, I used to be on that commission, and it, and it always comes back, well, you gotta maintain it anyway, you gotta, so they're just gonna keep doing it. But there's different ways to dispose of trash. I mean, there's the incinerator that you create, can create energy, and, so anyway, I would just encourage you guys that are on that committee to try to keep working that.
Push for a little bit more recycling, I know it's not a money.
And that's another thing too.
Recycling costs.
Yeah, that's right. Especially if you use, if you lose your green tub, if it gets stolen, they won't take your plastic, they just, they just passed me up.
Well, I'd, I'd like to see them increase the number of plastics.
That's exactly.
Other communities do.
But then they go to single-stream recycling where they compact it all down and then ship it out. But that's, we can't do that, that's private industry.
They'll probably say that we don't have enough volume to make that work, but, but anyway.
In regards to sanitation, is it, is that by, the rate change by resolution or ordinance on that?
I'm not sure.
I haven't been around.
Well, if we did what you were walking through with us, you're saying that, what, after three years then, we would go from a negative of 200 and some thousand to a positive?
After five years, I think.
After, over a five-year basis, it would go from negative 200,000 to a positive 200,000.
Why don't we do that?
Well, that's what I'm recommending.
With a, yes, over a $3 increase.
But you're gonna, you're gonna see an increase.
Of $3.
Over the five years. And you're just gonna see the majority of it, this October 1, and then next July 1 will be the two big pieces. And the, the out ones, I'm not, those are, those look like they should be able to hold pretty well. You could, depending, I mean, our cash balance is a little bit better. Right now, we haven't finalized fiscal 12 yet, but are, the numbers that I, the last number that I saw for our cash balance is a little bit better than what I have on the sheet here, about $30,000 better. So I have a negative 240, I think we're at 210. But we'd need to add to the agenda, whether it's this next time or the time after. It's resolution is not so time sensitive, but we need to get on the agenda, a resolution to approve a rate increase.
We do, it is pretty timely, because we need to get the change, I think, to the waterworks by the end of August.
So they can get it implemented.
So they can do that quarterly billing and just be reflected.
So we can put it on, our next work session on August 13th? We can, we can talk about this again and then put it on council agenda for August 20? Is it okay with that?
Every work session, we're gonna have these subjects come up, right? We're gonna have people.
Right now, right now, you're gonna have, over the next few work sessions, you're gonna have a financial issue every time.
Good.
But that'll make it easier when we get ready to, to hit the budget.
Is it okay with you folks? I, I'd rather not put it on the next council meeting because I think we need some more discussion.
That sounds good.
Okay. Thank you, Jim, thank you, Stephanie. Anything else, council, bud? Have any committee reports?
We just need that five grand. Just throwing that out there, we need that five grand, everybody.
You referring to the high drill?
Yes, sir. No, I just need five grand, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else, council? Jim, anything else? Okay, I think we've made it through the agenda, we'll be adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Really? How long have they been doing that?
They've been doing it for a year. And if you're not on board, you're working the.
You gotta be kidding me.
The best thing about that is, we don't have the time.
What happened was, in 2008, they had a lot of.